Mayor Householder.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Farmer.
Present.
Councilmember Fry.
Present.
Councilmember Bader.
Present.
Councilmember Hicks.
Present.
Councilmember Tanner.
Present.
Councilmember Koenig.
Present.
Next one would be the approval of the agenda.
I'd like to add something to the agenda. Under new business, after career connections.
What was that now?
Career connections.
I'll move to approve the agenda with the noted changes.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next one is approval of council, city council minutes for March sixteenth, twenty fifteen, regular meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the March sixteenth, twenty fifteen, county, city council regular meeting.
I'll second.
Any more discussion on it?
I think we need to change it to a special meeting.
No, I do have one thing. Under keys of city hall, didn't we vote on that? Because it says I hear to bring it back to the council on the next agenda, but I thought we...
Because the first time you guys voted on it, you voted on it as a, under council comments, which...
Yeah, which we can't.
But did you make a motion on it?
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, and then I seconded it.
Right.
But it says we were going to bring it back here, is what it's saying.
The meeting before that meeting, if he's behind a meeting on there?
We voted on it.
Yeah, we did vote on it.
No, we did vote on it.
Okay, okay. I guess I'm confused on how that was.
Any more discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried for the minutes. The next one's for the special meeting, March seventeenth, or twenty-third or twenty-fourth. Let's go with March seventeenth first.
I make a motion that we accept the council meeting minutes of Tuesday, March seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, as presented.
I'll second.
Any more discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried for March seventeenth. Now the special meeting for March twenty-third.
I'll make a motion that we approve the March, this special meeting, March twenty-third, that was at the Bangor Community Fire Department in reference to the joint fire board proposed budget.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. The next one is for March twenty-fourth.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from the special meeting of Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, as presented.
I support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Going down the list is approval of accounts payable and payroll.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills for accounts payable in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents with gross payroll of twelve thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-seven cents for a grand total of seventy thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and thirty cents.
Any more discussion on it?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
On here you have listed Pat Bader at twenty-five hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. I have not heard what her hourly rate is, or is she contractually...
Seventeen. And we're paying her contractually.
Contractually, and that's seventeen an hour?
Yeah.
I just seen it on here and I didn't know what it was.
I've got hard copied that, but I talked to Brian about that.
Any more discussion on it? Okay, roll call please.
Councilmember Koenig.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanner.
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks.
Yes.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Fry.
Yes.
Councilmember, oh, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Farmer.
Yes.
Mayor Householder.
Yes. Motion approved. Then going down the list was other regular business, resolutions, proclamation, reports, presentations. We had a attorney memorandum.
Yeah, we didn't get that.
Didn't get it? Okay. So we don't have anything for that?
We don't have anything for that, no.
What about for the treasures report?
Just what we had.
Alrighty, at this time, like the opportunity for public comments, please state your name, keep to within three minutes.
Name's Matt Earl. I don't think that Mr. Bader can vote on the bills payable if his wife is receiving a check. He has to...
Accuse himself?
Upstain. He might want to revisit that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alrighty, moving down the list, unfinished business.
Do you want to go back and correct that vote?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, right?
Can we?
Yes, we can.
I'll abstain.
Or just recuse yourself from the vote, whichever.
How can we do this?
What you really have to do is have whoever made the motion resend their motion.
Resend their motion.
I'd like to resend my motion on paying the bills. And who seconded that change?
And you have to send your second.
You want to resend yours? Okay.
And I agree.
Okay. Now, I will make a new motion to pay the accounts payable in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, nine dollars and sixty-three cents plus a gross payroll of twelve thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-seven cents for a grand total of seventy thousand dollars, nine hundred and forty dollars and thirty cents.
And that's with the acknowledging his...
No, you have to just second.
You get a hint of...
Okay, I will, I will second that, yes.
Alright, any more discussion on it?
Any more discussion.
Let's go ahead and do another roll call, please.
Councilmember Koenig.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanner.
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks.
Yes.
Councilmember Bader.
I don't spare him.
Councilmember Fry. Mayor Pro Tem Farmer.
Yes.
Mayor Householder.
Yes. Motion approved. So going back to unfinished business, Winkle Tower lease.
Winkle Tower lease. I called our wonderful up and we went up to the tower to look at it because I haven't seen it. And the italicized section of the tower lease, we can strike because it really doesn't apply to them. That's basically what I wanted to see is if that had any bearing. And then I know Luke spoke with him later of the sale of the, of the tower.
Yeah, I probably don't want to go into too many details at this point since we're still talking about it. But basically, he was just looking for reassurance that he wasn't going to be kicked off the tower if the city was to buy it. I think he was looking for a little bit of the reverse. If at some point he wants to sell it, or he's done with it. The idea of this contract was so the city would have basically first option to buy so that if we use it for something infrastructure-wise, nobody buys it from him and then charges us two hundred thousand dollars, you know, to be up there. So he just want, he has a repeater up there and he has some amateur radio stuff. And he was just looking basically to be able to keep his stuff if he sells it to us for, for some length of time without adding new things to it. So I think that's pretty fair and an even trade, basically.
The rest of the lease acceptable, everybody?
I, I think he's pretty acceptable. When I talked to him on the phone, he was a little concerned about the bottom part. And I, he was concerned that if we, that we would have the option to purchase it and kick him off. He didn't want that to happen. I said, "No, that's not what the city's looking for as far as I know." So I was going to get him some specs for the transmitters that'll be up there. If we were to use one for like the water meters in the future. And the wire structure, just to give him an idea of what we could put up there. And he was going to get a new copy of the contract and go over it and bring something back to us. So, but other than that, I mean, he's pretty agreeable. It's, it's almost a done deal.
I think we're done with just that one section.
Yep, yep. And setting a price, you know, if he was to back out of it, what we would give him for the tower and stuff like that, so.
Do you need to just table a motion?
Yeah. We're still working on it.
I'd like to, just at this point, just have a table, get a motion to have a table for now until the contract's finally worked out.
I make a motion that we table the Winkle, Winkle Tower lease until the details can be worked out and then it be brought to the council for approval.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. The next one is lockbox ordinance.
One I've got in your packet also, you have price list. But the one that says liftoff, it's for two ninety-five. Maybe this is a surface mount one for two fifty-five. Looks like it. This is it. And it's heavy.
Yeah, you got to pass, pass that around and open it up. It's pretty... No, but I, what was your question? Because I did talk to him. He called me because he wasn't going to be here.
So, okay, it says in there in the, in the ordinance that they would be charged thirty dollars up to a maximum of three hundred dollars. So decide to pay that because this is two ninety-five for this, so they, they paid it three hundred. And then they don't get it. Will they get another fee on top of that the following year? Or is that fee just reoccur? How does that work?
Well, I don't see anything in here about reoccurring yearly or anything that applies to that, really. It just says the responsible party shall be subject to a fine of thirty dollars for each day of non-compliance with the ordinance and said total fines shall not exceed three hundred. So said, if said fines shouldn't exceed three hundred dollars, there's nothing in here saying it can recur.
Derek was kind of making it sound like it would still be optional even if they passed the ordinance. And that's not the case. If we pass the ordinance, there's the law.
Yeah, that's not what he was saying. What he was saying was that they're not going to run around forcing anybody to do it. It's not like unless Regina makes it a priority, I don't think she's going to send Leonard out and tell him, "You better go check all the businesses right now and find them."
You have to have an alarm system within the business. I don't have...
And you have to have it...
It has to have, be a reporting alarm system.
And it has to, it's not just an alarm that, that dials out. It's an alarm that dials out based on a fire. So, and you have to have some, it's, it's like fire suppression. It says, if you read the ordinance in here a little bit. So, very many businesses that it would apply to. I, I don't think there's any businesses that it would apply to that don't already have it. The purpose of this, like he said, was to prevent, there was one business being, I think it was the pharmacy that wanted to back out of it. And he wants to prevent them from backing out of it because it's a good thing for the fire department to be able to access all these buildings with one key without having to break doors, windows, and get crazy when an alarm goes off. It saves them a lot of money. Three hundred dollars is nothing compared to one of those doors. One of those doors could easily be fifteen hundred to three thousand dollars.
So what was the pharmacy's opposition to this? Why did they not, did he...
They were concerned about security.
Okay, and that was my next question, too. Who...
Did you, did you get a chance to grab that box?
No, I, I mean, I know Derek said he would be the only one with the keys, but would there anybody else have access to them? Because what if he...
I believe he said that...
On vacation.
If he's on vacation, he's right now.
No, I believe he said that there's three people that have the key. He said it himself. Steve, I think you have a key to them. And there's one other. Yep, the first out truck has it.
Our first out truck.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, and they keep tight tabs on it, and we know who has the keys. It's not like there's copies made and they're floating around the area. Knox, on top of that, insurers, I believe they said, I don't know what the totals were. But it, it's a good deal. There's nothing that's going to really change. It's just to prevent somebody from taking them out and creating, because they're going to turn around. And at some point, if, say, the pharmacy took it out, they are going to turn around and end up giving a key. The first time something happens, they have to bust a window out or bust a door out. They will turn around, give a key. And then, then Derek will be responsible for having the Knox keys and the key to the pharmacy and make sure that everyone that needs them has them. If you look, almost every business, commercial business, in these cities has those on the door. You can tell because they're pretty standard. They're, they're put on the door, on the side of the building. Very, very common. So...
I, I mean, it sounds like a good idea to me. I just was wondering what their opposition to it was, why they would be opposed.
Now, if it was, if it, if it was for all businesses, including ones that don't dial out for the fire suppression and all that, I wouldn't be in on pushing that. But since, for one, they already have it, we might be talking about maybe one business that's not here.
So, so let's get to it tonight. Either we vote on it or we table it.
Well, I'd like to see us vote on it. So I make a motion that we approve the lockbox ordinance. I don't have a number on this. Okay.
It's not going to get...
They have an assignment.
It will be numbered, okay.
So I, I make a motion that we approve the lockbox ordinance for the businesses. I don't know how much more specific I can get my ordinance.
Is there a second?
I'll support.
Any more discussion on it? Let's go and do a roll call.
Councilmember Koenig.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanner.
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks.
Yes.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Fry.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Farmer.
Yes.
Mayor Householder.
Yes. So motion approved for the ordinance for lockbox, as specified in the ordinance.
You don't have to worry about it. We talked about it last meeting.
Alright, going down the list. Spring cleanup.
Spring cleanup. I spoke with Tom from Republic and he said that they would do it for the same price as last year. Does anyone know what that was? I was thinking it was about eighty-five hundred. Does anyone remember?
Eighty-five hundred?
Do you remember?
That is extremely...
That sounds high.
Yeah.
Does anybody know what?
Was it four thousand dollars?
I was thinking four thousand.
Twice a year was eight thousand.
Twice it was eight thousand.
So that's why it was eight. Okay. And then Best Way got me a bid as, as per hour, so I'm not so sure if we can really...
Is there any way we can go back to them and just say that, you know, we have a flat rate from the other company? Can you bid it out that way?
I could ask them to, because they're giving us hourly for the, for the driver and thirty-seven dollars a ton for the disposal.
Were they also saying they had to do it on a Saturday, or...
And I don't know if they were aware of that, because I didn't speak to, to them. And this one says no items over five feet in length, and I don't know how long can a couch be.
More than five feet.
More than five feet.
And that just, that just needs, that just needs to be told to them. I don't see how there's any difference. If they can't bid it out, apples to apples, then it's a done deal, but I think they need to be told.
So I could get them, since I don't have anything from the other company yet. I could have them do this one.
What about the other, support DPW? Will they support it?
I don't know.
I mean, it's part of our normal budget. We paid in the past.
I don't know. It should be.
Yeah, if you want to clarify that it is four thousand dollars rather than eight.
So I get the price, sure.
So, so the idea, the timeline would be, when, when is the spring cleanup normally?
It's usually end of this month sometime.
Right, end of April.
It was the twenty-first last year.
Twenty-first. So we'd be looking at maybe the twenty-fifth this year because, or Saturday probably, assuming that the trucks aren't going to run during the week because they're on routes.
Right.
And that was just a one-day thing, right?
Right.
I would say.
It was one day.
Why don't Regina get more information, send it out to everybody? If we need to, we do a special meeting just for that.
Well, we have to get quotes. I mean, it's not just more information. We got to get quotes from somebody else other than reliable. And a quote that's in the same format.
Is that including the contract bill?
We'll have another meeting before that.
No, otherwise we wouldn't have to pay for it.
Always extra.
And then another thing is too, we have to get people notice. We can't just approve it on the twentieth and expect that to... So let's, let's, let Regina do her job and come back.
I thought that was part of their original, when they, when they give us a quote, that that was part of their bid, but not...
Apparent, no, that was one thing that was complained about, I believe, was that it's not, it should have been lumped in when they did that contract. They should, they should have done it that way.
So that's something we should be aware of the next time.
Yes, absolutely.
So once you look into that, let us know. If we need to, we do a special meeting after, after you're ready.
Yeah, because we'll need to get it out in the paper so people know when to put their stuff out by the roadside.
Going down the list was new business, firework permit.
And I think this is just an FYI, right? Just so they know, we're keeping it on this. Yeah.
No, we have to... We don't approve this, though? This is just...
Well, it's not in City of Bangor, it's actually...
No, this is, this is for the, the sale of the...
That's right for the sale.
They sell Jakes.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
So we do approve this or we don't?
It looks like they've already been given permission.
Right.
This is just an FYI.
It's just a FYI that they're doing the same thing.
So if it's an, if it's an... If it's an FYI, why is it on the agenda? Just out of curiosity. If this is just information...
So you'll know.
Well, we, but we can't make any decisions on it, right?
Alrighty, the next one would be the parade permit.
Just, just to back up to this, this application is not filled out all the way. It's missing the date at the top, it's missing sales staff. Company contact. And... The city, the city...
Open day six, twenty, seven, five.
Does, does the city, does the city require them to have insurance?
They do, right here. Certain type of liability is right there.
Why, no, but I'm just saying, do we check these?
Do we follow up and find out if they have it?
Well, yeah, I mean, I...
They've got an accord certificate, so somebody type this up for them.
I'm just looking at the name of the insurance company. And I'm thinking, somebody should check on stuff like this when you have a bunch of explosives in Harding's parking lot.
Another thing like Luke brought up, you might want to list that you had two salespeople. You guys permits covered for two salespeople, then anything that orders twenty-five dollars to a person.
Right, that's what I'm saying. They don't have anyone listed. As far as I'm concerned, the application's not filled out. If I turned in an application like this, they'd hand it back to me. So I don't know why it was approved until it's filled out, if it has been.
Who do they give that to, Harding's, or does that come out here?
No, that's, that's out of code enforcement.
No, that's came to Leonard, so, and Leonard is going off of what the state law is, yeah.
And I'm looking at, there's such a good liability insurance, and they're actually insured by three different insurers.
They also do this in different communities, too.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, that doesn't mean anything.
They just haven't hired the two people that are going to work here.
I know, I know. I remember there was issues with this last year or the year before. That's why I was asking why it was on the agenda, if there's anything that we can do, or if there's nothing we can do. There's no point in talking about it really, other than the fact that the application's not filled out. But I remember there was problems last year or the year before with how they did things because they got shut down at one point. And I think it was something ridiculous, you know, just something that wasn't filled out properly or turned in. But I remember they got shut down over it and they weren't very happy. I went to try to buy fireworks and they wouldn't let me. Yes, we did. Well, your code enforcer did.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, I don't remember that coming, that's on the count. Douglas Young and Katie Snyder. It was a lesser fireworks incinerator.
I'm just saying, it doesn't seem to be very regulated at all, and I know a lot of...
Person responsible is Jakes. Yeah, his name is Jakes.
Fireworks.
Fireworks.
And Katie Snyder signed. And then the lesser is Douglas Young.
Do we have any ordinance other than the peddler's permit? I thought we had something else that applied to the sale of fireworks and all that stuff. That was my understanding before.
There are state forms, I know. But they wouldn't...
But in all honesty, if we can't make a decision and this is not our business, shouldn't this just go back to Leonard and make that point to Leonard? He can take care of it?
Yep.
Yes. Alrighty. And then we'll back up on it.
How easy that was?
Well, that's what I said, why is it on the agenda if we can't do anything about it?
Like I said, we just talk about something. The next one is parade permit for the annual Memorial Day Parade.
This is for the Memorial Day Parade, and you see the, the parade route, and this one we do for one.
This is, this is a good parade. It's the same route that they use every year, so.
Yep. So I guess what we're looking for is...
I make a motion that we approve the request for the permit for the two thousand and fifteen Memorial Day Parade.
I'll second.
Any more discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. The next one going down the list is Act Fifty-One Resolution.
These are some street certification and decertifications. And there's two decertifications, but we're adding some streets that haven't been added before as far as the Act Fifty-One money is concerned. So the, the resolutions are with the maps and it shows you where the different streets are. And then also, the big map that isn't here is going to have some more major roads put on it, too. So we should get some more major road money. See Clark Street is one that's being vacated and it actually doesn't even exist anymore. And Mill Race Road is one that we do maintain, but I understand it goes down to the park. And if we decertify it, then we can decide that we want to gate it off if we want to gate it up. And the rest of them would be, being added on.
Was there a desire to gate it off? Is that why?
That's why it was put on the list.
If we were, yeah, but if you gate it off there, then it makes it harder for the police to patrol through there.
Yeah, we don't have to. This is just a suggestion.
Do we lose any funding from decertifying that?
Well, you're going to lose some, but you're going to pick it up with the ones that were in. And then we'll, we'll be even better with the major streets, because those bring in more.
I just don't want it to be something where the police have to get out and unlock a... To go in and drive through the park. That's a pretty good area to not be able to see through. That's a good-sized area.
So we're adding more.
Who suggested we do certify this Mill Race?
His name is Randy Parrott, works through PCI. He's working on the map, too.
I don't want to see us decertify Lyons Park at this point.
Well, let's not do that one then. The other one doesn't, Clark Street doesn't even exist anymore. We can take that one.
Oh, Lyons Park, Mill Race Road.
It's the very last one in your packet.
It's over by the schoolroom, I guess. Buildings and stuff there now, so there's no street anymore.
This is the dirtman that comes up Hamilton Wright and goes down into the, goes down into Lyons Park.
So the idea would be the same for the other parks, being able to gate that one off?
Oh, Clark doesn't even exist. It's over by the school. Building's over there now, I guess. So anyway, that street doesn't exist. The others all do. We're adding the other ones.
Funk Street. Funk Sedition. Have A H Morrison's addition.
Union Street, East of Union Street.
So where is David Walton Drive?
David Walton Drive is up by the industrial park. With Ali Hojer Drive that goes through the industrial park and it's over the side.
So, so if we do the one in the industrial park, what, what essentially happens? Does this privatize, it's no longer a road, we consider it, or...
Then it's, then it's right. Then we could do whatever.
So the ci, does the city still, so the city does not maintain this, so say, I'm, I'm not sure where David Walton Drive is.
We still have to maintain it, but then we have more choices. If we just put a gate up, we could. We can't put a gate up on it as long as it's a...
But this one's out in the industrial part. Where, where is this one at in the industrial park? The David Walton Drive?
Does that go up into...
Inner care, I thought, yeah, I think it's by...
This is east of the main road here, correct?
This is, this is Arlington here. And Ali Hojer Drive goes off.
Yeah, the one right over there, I'm thinking by the transportation building, is that? Now, what would be the good reasoning in our minds to decertify that?
We're not decertifying it, we're certifying it.
No, that one would...
That was a certification. That was a certification?
Yes, that's a certification.
Okay, okay, okay.
I think the only.
You only have two, you only have two decertifications.
That's what I was thinking, like, why would we decertify that one?
Mill Rose and Clark that doesn't exist, so you only got two to decertify, and the rest are all to certify.
And the others get certified.
So we need to do these individually, or how do we do this?
Um, I suppose you can do it how you wanna want them. Well, I would, I would separate the decertified ones out from the certified.
Right, right.
So if you just decertify Clark, I would do that one separate, and then.
All those resolutions here, so. Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna see us decertify the, the Mill Race Road. I, I don't see any.
A H Morrison's addition. So it looks like just a decertification is Clark Street.
It's just Clark Street.
It's, um, that says.
Right.
It says it's Union Street. A H Morrison's addition, there's a recorded plot of that. There's a man, it's just a little tiny. A lot of these are just little stubs.
Little tiny, yeah, like, little tiny.
Isn't that the entrance to Clonass Park?
What?
The one on Union Street? Yeah, Union Street, I mean, wait, wait, right here. Union Street goes right into Clonass. Yeah. Union Street certification, isn't that where you're going to?
And then the very last one, which is A H Morrison's.
Just that, okay.
So we'd certify doing David Walton.
So like, a hundred feet of, a hundred feet, a hundred and twenty-five feet of.
I have to turn this map, but I don't like.
Talking about Mr. Wayne and Thomas.
No, I'm just, I'm, I know where it's at now.
Have we looked at the condition of some of these little roads, like the Funk Street?
This must come off of Union Street and go down into.
Does it matter? I'm, I'm just saying, is it relevant to the certification? The cer, the certification is just to get funding and stuff, I believe, isn't it? Well, it doesn't hurt us in any way to certify these roads, I don't see. The only one I would not decertify would be the Mill Race Road, because I think, I don't see any good reason for that at this point, not yet. I, I don't see any good reason especially to gate it up, or to, yeah, I don't see any good reason to do that at this point.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get cameras on it for Parks and Recreation, so we can do it.
Then we can do it.
I think it'd be a good time to do it then.
Still, the only thing that concerns me about that is the amount of space between each of the roads. If something's going on in the park, think, the officer has to get out of his car.
Run a long way.
And run a long way. That gives people a long time to get away.
Or a lot of bridges to cross. Working the sidewalk.
Right.
So I guess we're looking at, is there a motion to, for the Clark Street decertification?
I make a motion that we decertify Clark Street in the City of Bangor.
I'll second.
Here's the resolutions, do you see the resolutions here?
I do. Let me read the resolution.
Resolution, yeah, go ahead and read it.
At a regular meeting of the City Village Council of Bangor, Michigan, held at the City Village Hall, April sixth, two thousand and fifteen, the following resolution was offered by, would be me, and supported by Jim Tanner. Whereas the City of, Village of Bangor does wish to decertify, vacate a portion of Clark Street. This decertification of located between West Arlington Street and West Douglas Street for a total decertification length of two hundred and twenty-three feet. And then resolution adopted on today, signed by our village clerk, certified to be a true copy on the date, and signed by the clerk.
Any more discussion on it?
We need a roll call, or? We are a city, right?
We are a city.
Any more discussion on it?
Last time we asked anybody.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Koenig.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanner.
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks.
Yes.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Frye.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Farmer.
Yes.
Mayor Householder.
Yes. The other one, if nobody wants to make a motion for the Mill Race Road, we leave that alone?
I think we just leave it alone for right now, and then if we decide in later time, we can absolutely do it.
I guess going through, uh, the next one would be street certification resolution for, uh, Funk's addition to the Village, uh, City of Bangor.
I know.
I don't see why not.
If we, if there's a motion for all three.
We have three.
I don't feel that's accurate, they're all separate resolutions.
I think, I think we should do them separately, absolutely.
They have different, yes.
Different dates and different legal descriptions.
Alright, I move that we approve the resolution for street certification for, uh, Funk's addition to the Village of Bangor. At a regular meeting of the City Council of Bangor, Michigan, held at City Hall on April sixth, two thousand and fifteen, the following resolution was offered by Lucas Koenig and supported by.
Dan Frye.
Dan Frye. Whereas the City of Bangor did on December tenth, nineteen oh nine, acquire title to Funk Street. As it is necessary to furnish certain information to the city, or to the state of Michigan to place the street within the city system. City street system for the purpose of obtaining funds under Act fifty-one, PA nineteen fifty-one, as amended. Now therefore, it is resolved that said street is in the recorded plot of Funk's addition to the Village of Bangor. Uh, that said street is located within a city right-of-way, and it's under the control of the City of Bangor. That said street is, is a public street and is public, is for public street purposes. That said street is accepted into the city local street system and was open to the public prior to December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. Resolu, resolution duly adopted, date. See, clerk certified copy, so. So do we need to vote on this?
Yes, we do.
Any more discussion on it? Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Koenig.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanner.
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks.
Yes.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Frye.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Farmer.
Yes.
Mayor Householder.
Yes. Uh, the next one would be, uh, street, resolution for street certification for A H Morse, Morrison.
I know, he keeps jumping around.
I make a motion that we pass the resolution for the street in A H Morrison's addition to the Village of. Want me to read this? At a regular meeting of the City Council of Bangor, Michigan. Oh, we have to have a second, before I can read.
Yeah, I did it wrong, we really should have a second.
Second, Jim did.
Jim. Okay, at a regular meeting of the City Council of Bangor, Michigan, held at City Hall on April sixth, two thousand and fifteen, following resolution was offered by member Lynn Farmer and supported by Jim Tanner. Bangor did on July first, eighteen seventy-four, acquire title to Union Street, and whereas it is necessary to furnish certain information to the state of Michigan to place the street within the city street system for the purposes of obtaining funds under Act fifty-one, PA nineteen fifty-one, as amended. Now therefore be it resolved that said street is in the recorded plot of A H Morrison's addition to the Village of South Bangor. That the center line of said street is described as commencing at the north quarter point of section twelve, township two, south range sixteen, west Bangor Township. Van Buren County, Michigan, then south and parallel to the west right of way line of Lincoln Avenue, a distance of fourteen hundred and eighty-seven point six five feet. Then it's west and parallel to the north right of the way line of thirty degrees and fifty-four minutes east, a distance of thirty-eight point four six to point of beginning. Then it's west, a distance of hundred fifty-four feet to the westerly end of said street. That said street is located within the city right-of-way and is under the control of the City of Bangor. That said street is a public street and is for public street purposes. That said street is accepted in the city local street system and was open to the public prior to December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. Resolution duly adopted on today's. Certified to be a true copy, today's date, and city clerk.
Any more discussion on it? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Koenig.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanner.
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks.
Yes.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Frye.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Farmer.
Yes.
Mayor Householder.
Yes. And the other one would be for, uh, David Walton Drive certification. I'll make a motion to accept the resolution for street certification for David Walton Drive.
I second that motion.
Read it, Fred.
Okay, Fred, you could read it.
We should probably boil it on, then he can read it, because it makes more sense.
Okay. Uh, any more discussion on it? Do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Koenig.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanner.
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks.
Yes.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Frye.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Mayor Householder.
Yes. Alrighty, that's a long. At a regular meeting of the City Council of Bangor, Michigan, held at the City Hall on April sixth, two thousand and fifteen, the following resolu, resolution was offered by member Fred Hicks and supported by member Lucas Koenig. Whereas the City of Bangor did on January twenty-eighth, two thousand, acquire title to David Walton Drive. And whereas it is necessary to furnish certain information to the state of Michigan to place the street within the city street system for the purpose of obtaining funds under. PA nineteen fifty-one, as amended. Now therefore, it is resolved that the center line of said street is described as commencing at the quarter point of section twelve, township two, south range sixteen, west Bangor Township. Van Buren County, Michigan, then it's north eighty-nine degrees fifty-nine minutes thirty-six seconds west along east and west quarter line, a distance of one thousand seven hundred forty-eight point four feet. Then it's south zero degrees zero minutes twenty-four seconds west, a distance of seventy point eight nine feet to the easterly line of road. Then it's along easterly line, south forty-one degrees fifty-nine minutes forty-one seconds west, a distance of one hundred ninety point fifty-five feet. Then it's continue along said easterly line on a five hundred and eighty-three point two feet radius curve to the left, to the end of a cord bearing, south thirty-two degrees forty-seven minutes fifty-two seconds west, a distance of one hundred eighty-six point four two feet. Then it's continue along said easterly line on a three, three thousand two hundred thirteen point forty-eight feet radius curve to the right, to the end of the cord bearing, south twenty-eight degrees. Minutes, one seconds west, a distance of five hundred and two point three three feet. Then it's continue along said easterly line, south thirty-two degrees thirty-three minutes fifty-nine seconds west, a distance of three hundred seventy-four point two two feet to point of beginning, then south fifty-seven degrees twenty-seven minutes fifty seconds east, a distance of eight hundred feet to the easterly end of said street. The said street is located within the city right-of-way and is under the control of the City of Bangor. The said street is a public street and is for public street purposes. That said street is accepted into the city local street system and was open to the public prior to December thirty-first, two thousand and. Resolution duly adopted on today's date of four, six, fifteen, um, and city clerk, signed by city clerk, uh, Kim Smith, certified to be a true copy, um, dated city clerk.
Good job.
Those are done. Uh, the next one is the manager's contract.
I think we have an election committee appointment.
Election committee appointment, yes.
Election commission.
Yeah.
Oh, election commission. Kimmy's another member on her election commission, and that would be.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, appoint our city manager, Regina Hoover, as, uh, being, uh, appointed to the election committee.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Now it's E, manager's contract.
Now, now before we do this, how are we doing this? Are we gonna sit here and, and work this out between the council with her here, or are we gonna?
Yes.
Well, let Regina talk for a second, she did talk to her attorney this week.
Yeah, okay.
So.
I'm ready.
Um, I was just wanting to see some changes in the, in the contract. If you go to page two, it talks about duration of the agreement. I think, um, number five should just be struck, because if five of seven people don't want me here, I don't think I should be paid beyond that point of time. And then number six, I'd like it to just say, in the event that I'm terminated, I'll be entitled to my salary and benefits, not beyond the termination date. So that under Article two, three, or two, four, B, or C, I'd like that struck. I like the salary part.
You know that's not in your interest, right?
But you know what?
Can I ask a question about that?
If a super majority of the members of this council don't want me here. Why, why should I be paid beyond the date of my termination?
I agree with that.
Well, I, I don't disagree, I'm just making sure she understands what she's doing.
Can I ask a question about the salary, as you started in two? Going back to minutes that we had okayed earlier. Uh, let me find it here.
For fifty-two thousand?
Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, was a special meeting. Um, a motion was presented by council member Frye and seconded by council member Coney to approve a salary of fifty-two thousand with two weeks of vacation, one week of personal time with health benefits once accepted. And have Mayor Household present this proposal to the city attorney for a contract. Roll call. Gays were Koenig, Tanner, Hicks, Bader, Frye, Farmer, and Householder. The next one, I came to a meeting, but nobody was here.
First thirty-first.
I came at seven o'clock, and it, then I realized when I talked to Kim the next day that, uh, we never did get that passed, the motion to come, 'cause we were gonna.
Oh, yeah, we never, yeah, we never did get back to.
Nobody showed up. So I went home. So anyway, going back to the salary, um, I noticed that it's fifty-five here, and I, I just questioned that when I read that yesterday.
Well, my understanding of that was that Regina got with the city attorney, and I'm assuming this is the number you're presenting to us, or?
I'm presenting that to you.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay, you're presenting that to us.
I'm presenting, yes.
I did, I did contact Brian at fifty-two, and then at that point, you put together something and started talking to Regina. Go ahead and negotiate.
The other.
Go ahead and let Regina keep talking.
Um, number three on page thirteen is, uh, you're required to do the twenty percent, so I would do that. Um, vacations, I would like mine prorated for the year, so it starts over in January, so I don't have to keep track of another fiscal year, so it'd be going April to April, but we can prorate that for the vacation time, and.
Wait, 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 I'm lost.
She's on page three, number, article eight, vacations.
It's got the ten days and the five, but instead of having to figure April to April, I'd like it to just run from January one to the end of the year, so.
You said twenty percent on the.
Yeah, 'cause that's, that's, that's what the law requires.
I think that's, um.
Yes, it's standard.
I think you have to do that.
Yes, you do.
Um, page four of thirteen, where it says, no vacation shall be paid in a little vacation day's not taken, vacation time may not be carried over from one year to the next, period.
Where, you said page four, right?
Right, we're on four, but it's number three. I don't think they should roll over, 'cause I think that could be trouble, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
What are we doing, we're striking it?
We're striking it, so.
She's striking any from one year to the next year without approval of city manager?
May not be carried over from one year to the next period, done.
And then as far as vacation time, if you want notification, if the mayor or premier hotel want notification, I can do that. If I'm gonna be out. You are not going to pay health insurance for my husband, you're just hiring me, so you're gonna do mine, that's it. And I want fifty-five thousand.
And part of, and part of the health is gonna also be dental and vision, is, is that going to include that?
I don't really need the vision insurance, 'cause, you know, I, I don't know that that part of it's necessary. I would like the other, but I don't know with the dental and the. A lot of times it seems like you pay more on premium for the dental and the vision than what really gets used, so, I don't care if I get that. I like the other.
But, but we pay that for all of our other employees, though?
But I don't know how many more I left, sorry. Lena, but, yeah, I don't know what she has.
She's got the same thing, I don't think that we can not pay one and one employee and pay it for the other, I don't know that we can do that.
Well, well typically, would you go back to, at other companies, what type of insurance the company picks up for that type of year?
Right.
Right, 'cause typically companies can go back and, uh, raise premiums, uh, raise copays, change policies. And generally, uh, employees usually don't have a say so in it.
But there's a little bit of a difference here, because we're talking about two different things. Like Trent Shering would be an employee, they're salaried, and they have a contract, so whatever's in the contract can be set in the contract. But if we had the employees, say, that the entire DPW still worked for us, I think we'd have to do that across the board. But I don't think that's exactly the same way with the, the deals here that we're working out with the salary and the contracts. But, you know, I don't think I'm gonna take it out of there, but if she doesn't want it, she doesn't want it, I, I.
I don't have a problem with that, you know, I mean, it's, that doesn't really.
But in, but in, but in regular businesses.
Right.
I mean, you get your health. And if you want dental and vision, you have to pay extra.
Well, that's.
I mean, you have to pay for it. I have to pay for mine, my husband has to pay for his.
Yeah.
And then typically, you get.
Then typically, you get to take premium packages, less premium.
Right.
How much you wanna pay?
I agree.
How much you want deducted from all of your check? Same thing, if you wanna pay more on your, your health insurance, you can get a better coverage, pay less, less coverage.
Under the.
We're on page two, under article four, number one.
So you wanna, you wanna scratch out dental vision and disability insurance, or just dental and vision?
You can take, I don't know.
Dental and vision?
How many people get disabled, doesn't matter to me.
It doesn't matter now because you don't have to worry about it.
No, that just, a lot of that covers you too if you, you know, if you get hurt out of job.
Yeah, disability and.
There's a pretty big step over there.
Yeah, you slip down the stairs or something, you're off for two weeks or whatever.
Okay, so, so the next question, and I'm okay with striking the dental and the vision. The next thing that I was looking at would be page six, the medical leave. This seems kind of.
A lot, doesn't it?
A lot.
Yeah.
I noticed that, too.
Kind of, this either needs to be short, sweet, and to the point.
Page six.
Or not in here, I, I mean, I, I don't understand why there's a huge. Is there something here that's required by law, which is why this is so extensive? Or is this just something that somebody was doing out of the kindness of their heart? Because, for example, if the city manager is not returned to work at the end of six months, the position is vacated. However, the city manager may continue her health coverage for up to six additional months by paying in advance each month the city, to the city, the full amount of the required health premium. So state and federal laws such as Cobra may affect this section and shall take precedence, but the leave of absence here, I mean, it looks like we could be without a city manager for six months or more, depending on how it happened.
Well, you do, you do have the FMLA law. You can't do anything about it. So all the details.
Wouldn't that be more if something happens to her family? But what happens, God forbid, if she would come down with some fatal disease like cancer or something.
Well, I mean, that's what usually people at work would fall back onto if they get disabled or sick or whatever, they go on FMLA leave. Stressed out, too stressed out.
No, I know, but I'm saying with a cancer leave, like my wife had it a pair ago, and she was under a disability.
She's under disability.
She would be under disability, but that's not what this one says. This was, given a leave of absence with pay for a period not to exceed three months.
Say you got in an accident and.
And then she could go up to six months.
Couldn't come into work because you were in a bunch of casts for, you know, four months. Well, we're without a city manager during, I, I don't know exactly how that works. I guess at the same time, I don't know, I just feel like this is a weird situation, I wouldn't wanna be put.
I refer to Brian about it, I would say.
Well, I tried emailing him today and he's out till the thirteen.
He said he'd be out.
That, that's the only thing that I see that's maybe, I mean, maybe it's not an issue. Does anyone else see anything, physically unable to report for work?
Well, I think part of the stuff, we can only improve this contract conditionally. And I think it still will have to be retyped up and verified it's still legal from that type of standpoint. I mean, like I said, the medical leave, we have to be careful, it has to be legal to the state, federal guidelines.
Well, it, it already says that, though, it says at the bottom, no matter what changes, we could take all this out, and it says state and federal laws such as Cobra may affect this section and shall take precedence. So if there's, it doesn't really matter what we have here because if there's a state or federal law that takes precedence in that section, it's not gonna matter. Or if we don't have anything in place, the state and federal laws still, you know, apply. So this is above and beyond the laws, as far as I'm concerned, the way that it's worded. So any way that we were to change this wording, it would still be subject to the law. So I, I don't think there's much to worry about there.
Yeah, but her long-term disability would cover that, her workman's comp, or, or it could be paid by insurance or actually, so it does cover that in the last sentence on that paragraph.
I know, but if you look on the, if you look on the first paragraph, number one, it says this may be paid by insurance, workers' compensation, long-term disability, or by the city making an actual payment.
Right, but if she's getting long-term disability, that's usually what covers that.
Right, right.
I mean.
Because short-term usually covers the first thirty days, and then after that, long-term kicks in.
And then it gives the option for her to continue her health insurance through the city for up to six months additional before she was forced out of the insurance, is that what I'm reading?
Yes. Well, she could.
If she continued to pay it for an additional six months, she could stay under the city's health insurance.
Right, right.
I don't know. That's, that's the only thing, I, I think it's kinda weird, but it, it might not be that important to talk about because it's never come up, but.
Yeah, from what I have always seen, that's pretty standard.
So we can, we can leave that, that, I don't, it's just a whole page of stuff that didn't quite.
I promise to not get that sick.
I don't.
I shouldn't get ran out.
You say that now. I think that's pretty standard.
Well, I, I'm happy with it with the changes that have been made. And, and I was the one that said I was okay with that salary in the first place, which probably didn't help us as far as her bringing that back. But regardless, I think that's a fair salary and you have to pay people for the position. Just do this all, well, we think you're only worth this much right now, we think you could be worth more in the future and.
I mean, I, you know, I didn't agree with the salary, you know, but the fact is, I mean, I, I think Regina will be a good asset to us. I like to start lower because I like the people to keep the hunger, so to speak, and work towards something. Well, that's just me, that's just how I, I do my negotiation, but, you know, but I certainly think it's a fair price. How did we get to the fifty-five if we approved two without giving us a chance to go up?
All we approved was a negotiating.
That was all we approved. She, she brought back the fifty-five to us, is what she said. What she was negotiating the contract with Brian. She's asked for fifty-five in these changes.
When I talked to Brian on, what day was he here, Wednesday? Was he here Wednesday, I think?
Thursday? Was it Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday or Thursday?
It was Wednesday or Thursday.
He was here, he stopped at the barber shop.
Oh, okay.
And when I talked to him, he said he didn't really, you wanted a contract put together, and he didn't know anything about the contract. And then you said you didn't really know that much about the contract, so did you get a hold of him in the meantime?
I emailed him, I told him from our meeting what we agreed on.
Right, because he had no idea where to go with this thing when I talked to him.
Yeah.
And that was like last Thursday, he stopped in the shop.
Well, I didn't ask him to call me back and get ahold of me, which he never tried to, or did.
As far as I'm concerned, it's irrelevant because she's asked for fifty-five. If we don't wanna give her fifty-five, then we need to discuss what we would like to counter with.
I think that would be a good idea.
Let's, let's discuss it.
Okay. My, my feelings are the same as we were before, based on she'd asked for forty-eight originally on her job application.
No, that was fifty-eight.
Wasn't it forty-eight?
No, it was fifty-eight. It was fifty-eight.
Okay. And like I said, you know, with the people that we were going up against, I thought the fifty-two that Nick came across with was a bad offer because it also leaves room for expansion. You know, I mean, I know your age as they do mine, and I don't know how long you plan on doing this, but I assume you wanna do it for a few years. So to do that, you know, what do we, what do we come back with in three or four years? We gotta be able to afford the fifty-five, and I personally think with what we're still paying Ryan, we're getting into some funds here that I personally don't know if we've got fifty-five thousand to offer her. That's the question I have.
I guess my question to counter that would be, what are you proposing? Because I, I guess if we're, if we're not gonna pay her fifty-five, we were looking at the other guy who was asking.
Seventy, one seventy.
I know, but I wasn't gonna give him seventy either.
You weren't gonna give him either. But even more so, going down to fifty-two thousand, for example, if that's what you're countering or, or talking about, for example, you're saying that you don't know where we would get the fifty-five. Well, if you don't know where we'd get the fifty-five, how do you know we have the fifty-two, so how can you counter?
That's what I mentioned when, when we were talking about that in the twenty-sixth meeting. I said, do we even know if we got the fifty-two to offer her?
From my understanding, from what I've looked at, we, we have the funds to pay the city manager. So, but that's my understanding, I mean, I'm not in there every day there.
Well, the transference, we got it too. You know, I didn't know that.
Well, we, just from looking at the budget and stuff, I mean, it wasn't that I looked outside of the meeting. It was just when we went over the budget and I went over that packet that I got.
I would like to say, for example, I'd like to come back at the fifty-two and end up somewhere between fifty-five and fifty-two that Regina could be happy with. That's my feeling. I think she's happy with fifty-five.
I would be too.
Well, I certainly would be too.
But I guess I'm asking this.
Are we gonna negotiate or just say yes?
Well.
No, I'm just saying, so we don't get her, and she says, I don't wanna budge out of fifty-five, okay? So she doesn't budge, so we're gonna let Kim. Right, but negotiations were. Right, but negotiations were unavoidable and we negotiated in front of her. That's my.
Well, and that's true.
So how did we get to fifty-five when we were at fifty-two when we were doing it that? Luke said fifty-five, but everybody else agreed to fifty-two, that's where I'm coming from.
But when that was said in front of her, that's what I'm saying. That, right there, pretty much said fifty-two.
Let him pay the extra three thousand dollars.
You don't have, you don't have to approve the fifty-five, but I think it's a slap in the face to give somebody, first of all, who asked in her interview process, I believe she said she would like to be in fifty-six to fifty-eight, somewhere in there. Fifty-five is one thousand less than that, or than the minimum that she asked for in the interview. Well, she asked, she, she said she would like to be in the fifty-six, I think, to fifty-eight in the meeting, in the, in the interview. But regardless, we were paying Ryan quite a bit more than that. And as far as I'm concerned, he didn't do hardly anything while I was here, regardless of what anybody thinks, so that's just my opinion.
That's your opinion.
But the point is, Rich Marsh was also paid in the high fifties, and I don't see why you would bring someone in that is committed to this community and try to lowball them, you know, somebody that we know that.
Don't use that word, because that's not what we're doing.
Try to, try to bring them down. Right.
Okay, she said fifty-five, I say fifty-two, let's see what she comes back with. If she says it's gotta be fifty-five, we, we make the balls in our court at that point, then we make a decision. But I think just to say fifty-five, because you said it and she said it, does not ring true in my heart.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, she's countered the fifty-two with the fifty-five by asking for the fifty-five. We talked about fifty-two, I mentioned fifty-five in the meeting, we all agreed on fifty-two. As far as I'm concerned, this right here is her counter offer for fifty-five.
Well, and she's, she's giving up her vision and dental and her husband's insurance, so I think we need to account too because even if we were at fifty-five, we might be paying, I mean, fifty-two, we might be paying fifty-five once we pay those.
Well, and on top of that, even, there's, there's other things to consider that we've already dealt with with previous employees.
I'm just gonna go out there and say, guys, we should Regina do her own negotiating. I'm just saying, because this is what happened last time, so. Let's get your thoughts on it.
I'd like to say one thing. You know, another thing you gotta take into consideration, Regina's got ten years of experience as a township supervisor.
Jim, let Regina do her negotiation.
Yeah, but here, here's the deal, either we're gonna do this without her here, or we're gonna do it without her here, so how do you? Exactly. So there's no, I mean, we need to be able to, but we need to be able to discuss amongst ourselves.
Let Regina talk first. Go ahead, Regina.
Okay, I think fifty-five is very fair, and that's what I. Simple.
Pretty simple.
Well, I was gonna say that with Regina's experience and everything, sure, the city has more departments that are overlooked than one of the township does, but she is very well-qualified, so a, a very experienced, very well-qualified person, and you gotta look at that, too. And I, I support giving her the fifty-five.
Let's go.
All right, let's, before we do that, so basically, we need to really go over this contract a little bit, highlight the areas that we just talked about. She did ring up before we vote on it.
Well, do we?
What we're gonna strike, what we're not gonna strike.
Yeah, let's go that formally.
Strike number five on page two.
Let's start at page one of thirteen.
There's nothing to strike on that page.
Number one?
Page two.
Page two.
Page two.
Article two, number five.
We're into strike.
We'd like to strike, is that correct?
Yeah, get rid of that.
What was the deal with number six?
Take out under article two, three, or two, four, B, or C, and just leave it, in the event the city manager's employment is terminated, I'll be entitled to only, I won't be entitled to any continued salary, just up to when I'm terminated.
Okay. So number six would read, in the event of the city manager's, in the event the city manager's employment is terminated, the city manager shall not be entitled to any continued salary or benefits beyond her termination date. Are we in agreement on that?
Yes. Regina, so article three's gonna stay the same, potentially at this point. Article four, we're gonna strike dental and vision. Page three.
Twenty percent.
Page three, number three of article four, the city manager shall contribute twenty percent of the month premium cost for all insurance coverage elected by the city manager.
Then under article eight, we were doing January first instead of April sixth, is that what you said?
I would rather start my, do that one, one to twelve thirty-one, and just, we'll just prorate.
How many you have left for this year?
We'll prorate.
January first to December thirty-first. Then basically stating that this year will be prorated.
This year will be prorated, and then if you want notice of when I'm gonna be gone, I can put that in there, too.
Yes.
And the answer is yes, if you do wanna know when I'm gone.
Article eight, section three, I believe, should be, except as provided in the following paragraph.
So on page four.
Yeah.
So which?
Were we, were we scratching something from there?
We're scratching, we're scratching, we're gonna say, except as provided in the following paragraph, no vacation pay shall be paid in lieu of vacation days. Not taking a vacation time may not be carried over from one year to the next, period, done. So you're striking the last part of that. On holidays, I don't think there's any.
So we're gonna add on page three of thirteen that the city, notify, the city manager will notify the mayor or mayor pro temp for any vacation days.
So we're just changing the city council to mayor or mayor pro temp?
Yeah, so we're just notify if she's gonna take vacation.
Instead of the council, the mayor.
Personal leave, January, D, secondary informant, page five, there's nothing I think that needs to be changed.
So no more changes on page four, thirteen, just strike in, we're here for the carryover. No changes on five.
Wait a minute, so on, on article ten, on page five of thirteen, article ten, personal leave time, are we changing that to January one also?
That'll be prorated, too.
Okay.
Yes.
So page six, there was nothing to change on there that I know of. Page seven, we didn't talk about anything on that page either. Page eight.
On page seven, I really wanna talk about article fifteen because I really wanna encourage the council to do that. I mean, all the years I've been on the council, that has very rarely happened to have an annual review, and I really think that that's really important for us to do.
It's in there, and there's, there's also in the back of the contract, too.
Right.
So page eight, there was nothing there, talking about complete agreement modifications, governing law, severability. And page nine is approval and signatures. Page ten through thirteen is the city manager evaluation form.
Yeah, so you have no excuse to not do it, here's your form.
You do, you have no excuse.
So I think we walked through, I think we had it all marked up for the changes, so I guess we're to the point.
Can, can we, can I ask a question? Can we just approve as amended, basically, and have it drawn up to be signed? I mean, how, what's the timeline on this, and what are, that's the only question I have, pretty much.
Well, I think we would request a motion to approve the contract as marked up, as discussed with these changes. And then if approved, then we vote on that. And if it fails, we would go back again to modify it.
Do we have to wait that long? Can't we just go with what we have drawn up?
That's what we're talking about, the modification.
Changes made. That's what I'm saying.
We're gonna put this marked up contract today, if approved. And should we go to the city manager, or we go back, if it fails, we negotiate more, more changes and put that back on the table.
I move that we approve the labor agreement. I move that we approve the labor agreement for the city manager, um, as amended, and that we present to the city attorney, uh, to make those changes, so that it can be signed, or do we have to do it that way?
I, I would make the motion as marked up.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended, yes. Then, if we approve it, then what can happen?
Well, they can sign it, they can sign it anytime.
They can sign it now, then they can be cleaned up in a formal clean sheet.
Okay, I move that we, uh, approve the labor agreement for city manager Regina Hoover.
As amended?
Amended.
One second. Any more discussion on it? Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Council member Koenig?
Yes.
Council member Tanner?
Yes.
Council member Hicks?
Yes.
Council member Bader?
Yes.
Council member Frye?
No.
Mayor pro temp farmer?
Yes.
Mayor household.
Yes. Motion approved, welcome Regina as our former city manager at this time.
With the contract?
Uh, with the contract.
She's all sworn in, huh?
Not yet.
Not yet.
We gotta do that over and...
She'll have to, yeah, she'll have to sign. Once the contract's amended.
So, do we need to, any signatures we're signing right now until this is amended and cleaned up?
I make sure it's amended first.
Okay, all righty. So, going down the list is F for Career Connections.
Career Connections, yes, um, Jenny Rapatsky has been working here at city hall since I arrived, and she's a tremendous help here in the office, and I got a, um, proposal from Career Connections, if we will hire her, they will pay for the first forty hours, and she will only work here six to ten hours per week, and it would be minimum wage. So, I looked at the budget to see if that money was available, it would be a little over seven hundred dollars to finish out the fiscal year, and it's, there is money in the city council, um, city hall budget, actually, to hire her in, and, um, there's just all kinds of jobs here that she could do.
What has she been doing?
Oh, my gosh, she started out by sorting, were those voter records, or... Yeah, they were voter records, that had, um, been stacked by the previous city clerk, and I had huge amounts of them, and they were just in big stacks, and what she was doing was going through those and finding out whether or not to file them into an active file or into an inactive file, because I do have to hold on to those.
Are we looking at, uh, now, will they, will they pay that much per week, or just what's that deal?
Well, they'll pay for the first forty hours, which probably, she's working six hours a week, you know, it would go for a while, but she's, uh, up invoices to copies of checks, and I've had her clean things out, put them back in, and, I mean, just, there's so much...
So, basically, you're talking about not bringing her a full-time employee, you're just bringing her in as a part-time?
Right, just, just for six to ten hours a week.
And Career Connections...
You got any further ideas of how long she would, might be employed, or is this...
As long as I could keep her busy.
Okay. You know what I was, what I was thinking, uh, also, I know that she probably well needed in, but downstairs, but if she gets time...
Well, I was thinking that too.
Yeah.
There's lots of jobs.
Yeah.
As, as far as I'm concerned, if you've already found money in the budget for Career Connections, it's been, uh, pretty helpful to us, it's a good program that they have, and I think we should support them, and this is one of the ways that we can show our support for the program and give back to them, uh, for what they do, uh, at a very reasonable price, as far as the mowing and the other, uh, things that they do for us, for the DPW, so, do we need a motion for that, or...
We do.
What's your name again?
Jenny Rapatsky.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, um, accept Jenny Rapatsky?
Rapatsky.
Rapatsky, um, to work six to ten hours, um, for Career Connections at city hall per week, six to ten hours per week.
I second that motion.
All right, any more discussion on it?
Roll call.
Give me a roll call, please.
Council member Koenig?
Yes.
Council member Tanner?
Yes.
Council member Hicks?
Yes.
Council member Bader?
Yes.
Council member Frye?
Yes.
Mayor pro temp farmer?
Yes.
Mayor household.
Yes.
I did.
Nope, good.
Motion approved. Uh, the next one, going down the list, opportunity for public comments again? Please, go ahead.
I'd like to bring you back to the lockbox ordinance, um, were you proposing that ordinance, uh, for adoption of them at, at the next meeting?
Yes, we were.
Because I think you'd have to propose the ordinance first, and then probably have a public hearing, and then you have to adopt it.
Yes.
You have to have two readings, okay, so you have to have two readings of the ordinance, they haven't numbered the ordinance yet, so this was just a proposal, so, once we number the ordinance, there has to be two, it has to be a public hearing, you have to have two public readings of that ordinance.
I just didn't hear the word propose.
Okay.
I assumed that you were trying to adopt it.
No, no.
Okay. Thank you, Kim. Go ahead, please.
Where's Bonne Street? There's a map here.
Yeah, we can show you that.
Is that the one that's over there by, you had said, uh, oh, Dan, what were you talking about, down there by the park, it's on the northeast, the north, well, northeast side, east side of Quanis Park, is that right?
Yes.
I'm looking at that right on the map, it's the...
It's on the east side of Quanis Park.
Just the little, yeah, the pave, the paved drive that goes down to the parking area, it's basically the hundred and something feet of road right in front of it. Is that paved?
Here recorded, you know, it's over, yard off.
That's where the map is.
It's by Quanis Park.
It's over behind Leonard's.
Is that one? That, that's what I, it's right there before it goes down the street.
It's old mosquito park.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's mosquito park, not, not Quanis.
Oh, okay, okay, got you, got you, got you, okay, okay.
Because I was like, wait a minute, that'd be my Quanis.
Got you. No, 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 it's over, see, I was wrong.
Oh, so we're by, over the palace, Crystal Palace.
I was just going by what Danny said, looking at the map in front of me, the same as that intersection.
All right, any more questions? Go ahead, Steve.
Steve, Southern West Arlington Street. I made the comment last council meeting, done the same thing over again, Regina, you know, congratulations, but you should have asked for an open or closed meeting from her, and you didn't. You sat there discussing, you're asking, how did she know that it's fifty-five, but you come right out and said it. For how long have you guys been saying we're broke in this city? There was a rumor out, forty-eight thousand, it was discussed last council meeting, and you always said a word, that it wasn't forty-eight thousand, all of a sudden, tonight, no, it was fifty-eight thousand. The city's broke, the city's broke, that's all we hear. Water's not supposed to bring in any money, now I hear they're changing the water billing, the accounts, what's going on? Water is what brings money into the city. And if we don't have no money coming into the city, we're not making money, we're paying, Regina, no offense, Regina, but we're paying you big bucks, paying Pat Bader to file stuff with high wages, something just doesn't look right. It should be nice to have an explanation on something. And the same thing with talking, she should have been excused, she didn't wanna take that excuse, fine, I don't think any of us should have been sitting here during contract talks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, no one else is talking, comments? So, let's go ahead and do boards and commission appointments, correspondence, anything? Nothing today? Uh, next one's, let's go down the list, the city council member comments, uh, Danny?
Uh, congratulations to Regina, as I said before, um, I agree with what public comment was, we should have really went into, given her the option of a closed meeting, which we didn't. I think we've got to be transparent if we're gonna use that word, and I don't see it happening, and I'm hearing a lot of people saying they don't see it happening, so, that's my comment.
All right, thanks, Danny. Fred?
Uh, yeah. I know last time in our minutes, we had said something about, uh, police committee guidelines, and, um, I know that, I don't think you guys got yours all set up, so, we will, once they get it, we'll address it at that point, once they get theirs done, uh, because I know it was in our minutes, so I just wanted to remark that, that's why we didn't put it on the agenda. A while back ago, I'd asked, and this was years ago, and I'd asked if it was possible for us to invest any, any surplus funds, and I was told, no, but as I researched, it does say that we are able to invest surplus funds as a government entity, so, um, might be something to start thinking about, just to make a little money on some of the money that we do have, um, even if it's a little bit. And, and just due to some of the past and present developments, um, I think we need to work on our policy and procedures and, and get our policy committee back to, again, some of the policies, I think, that we need to be looking at is, um, a purchasing policy, um, due to improvements in ethics and co, ethics and conflict of interest policy, uh, traveling and expense reimbursement policy, I don't know if we have that either, and then we need, I think we need to develop a policy and procedure booklet, so that way, these issues can be addressed when they come up at the time. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thanks, Alfred, Harold.
Yeah, I, uh, when we were interviewing for the city manager, people made some good comments, you know, they went by the schools, said it looks like we have really good schools here, they also commented on, they thought the community took some pride and was taking care of their buildings and everything, and, uh, they had some favorable comments about Bangor, even though, uh, it didn't appear that way at times, uh, we have a good community, uh, we should be proud of it, that's all.
Luke?
Well, congratulations, Regina. As far as the contract negotiation goes, I think it could have gone differently, I think she's been pretty lax to what she's asked for compared to what some of the other people have asked for in the past, and it could have been differently, but it doesn't, it, it doesn't hurt for everybody to be able to hear how it came about either, I don't think it hurts us one bit. Uh, fifty-five thousand is less than any city manager's made for the, from the city probably in several years, right, three, at least three years, but probably more than that, and, uh, more bang for our buck, so to speak, with Regina than, than we were with them, so, that should be the least of the concerns. Um, as far as the, the water and the revenue thing, I, I'm not sure what the public comment was, um, specifically about that, but the water fund is an enterprise fund, it's not supposed to be used to pay the city's bills, it's supposed to be just for water and infrastructure and operation of that system, same with the sewer, um, so that comment didn't make much sense to me, coming from the public, the old public works director, I, 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 he must have, I, I wasn't trying to tag you, there must have been something more to that, I didn't quite get what he was getting at there, but that money cannot be used for anything other than that, so, um, we're not using that to float the city by any means. Uh, as far as spending money goes, the city is basically a business, and it needs to operate as one, and you need to be efficient, you need to spend your money wisely, just because we don't have a lot of money, when we spend money in one place where it might seem like we're spending, oh, well, we're spending money, but we don't have any, we're spending money in these places to try to make sure that we're not bleeding cash in all the other places, because somebody has to manage, somebody has to be in charge, and it makes more sense to put your money in a city manager than to blow it all at the DPW with people that aren't keeping track of it as well, for example. You have to have somebody in charge that is keeping track of it, making sure we're not bleeding cash, and that's really what it boils down to. For all I'm concerned, you know, I'd rather pay somebody, you know, twice what they're worth and have them run the department in the budget than have somebody go a hundred thousand dollars over budget every year, you're spending more than you would to pay someone to run it efficiently. So, I think that the, the money we're spending, as long as it's being, uh, that's within our budget, then that's the city manager's decision to make, if she tells us it's there, I believe it's there, until I see otherwise, that's how I've treated the past city manager and treasurer, and I think that we should continue that way, we should let her do her job, and unless I see something wrong with her recommendation, I'm gonna go with it, so, that's all I have.
Thank you. Lynn?
Um, I have several comments, I, I did wanna comment on Becky Clark's article on Regina, I thought it was very nice and very well done. A couple areas that concern me is that all of the city bank accounts are in one bank, um, when Regina was a supervisor of Bangor Township, all of their accounts were not in one facility, I think we need to take a very hard look at that, because our accounts are in a bank, that all of our accounts are not insured by the FDIC because of the amount that we have in the bank, so I think we need to take a very hard look at that. I know that, um, you're working on the third quarter budget, um, so that should be to us soon, and Fred, I agree with you, that we need to probably increase our policies and procedures, they had not been looked at, you know, you and I are the longest-tenured people on this council, and when I got on, they hadn't been looked at for probably thirty years, you know, and, and we spent many hours as our, as our policies committee, um, putting that, putting the ones that we had back together again, so, I don't think it would hurt to take a look at, um, some new ones, now that some of the things have come up, so, that's all I have to say, and congratulations.
And in relation to what, uh, Lynn just said, as far as policy, you know, we've had disruptions of the council, and they're not reflecting anything at all that's going on tonight, because they're, but in the past, we've had, uh, people that refuse to sit down when they're disrupting the council and think, need one, a policy, that's another policy that we can put in here, to have, uh, that, uh, they, uh, they, if they don't sit down, and we ask them nicely to sit back down and they're thinking that they refuse to do it, then we should, uh, have a policy that they can be removed, and, uh, that, if we're having a public meeting and it disrupts everybody. I would like to congratulate Regina in, uh, in being, on her approval of the, um, of her contract with the amendments. Regina comes with, comes with, uh, a lot of, uh, expertise in, uh, in what she does, and, uh, and she's basically a hometown lady, and she's got her heart in this area, and I think that she'll do very well, uh, working and representing the city of Bangor. I have another thing, uh, la, I can't remember the day, Barry, what day, it was raining, and, uh, the city was doing...
Probably, uh, every day it rained.
It, well, anyhow, last week, the, and I had, uh, got a call, and I also called Regina.
I found out more about that.
Did you?
And, Doug, you're back there somewhere, right? The product they're using is an all-weather product.
It's the same stuff we put down in the wintertime, because we can't get hot mix up, we're simply just trying to put something in the hole, so...
Sure. So we don't follow them.
Cars and tires and rims and wheels and bicycles and motorcycles and...
And that stuff will, uh, stay even though there's raining, uh, there's water in the, in the homes?
And here's when it's wet, and here's when it's cold, and here's when it's wintertime, it's simply called cold patch, and we get it from the county.
All right.
It's the same stuff they use, it's the same stuff they use in the state highways. Once the weather gets nice, we'll go back to the regular hot mix, but...
Hey, that's all I have to say.
Well, congratulations, Regina, I, I did talk to our attorney with what we agreed on a few weeks ago, setting up this, uh, contract, some reason I didn't hear back from him, and I really, you know, like you said, anybody around the fifty-two mark, um, the issue, you know, Regina did step forward, when she is stating in here, "Invent manager's employment is terminated, uh, she's entitled to receive salaries, benefits for X amount of months, date of termination," she didn't accept that. Other people that had contracts with the city receive ninety days, three months of pay, or even sixty days if they're terminated or anything else, she's waived that clause. She's also come back telling us, if, if, over a majority of the, not want her here, she does not wanna be here.
Right.
She's waiving these rights, I mean, this is almost an at-will agreement, and, and she's, she's being perfectly honest with us, that's not buying her out, that's not throwing anything at her, she's backed out her dental and vision insurance also, so we're talking negotiation, three thousand dollars. If she would have put down here ninety days, as other, as other, we paid, we would have paid probably at least five to seven thousand dollars, and we're talking three thousand dollars, we're talking dental and vision, she waived, you know, right there cuts light into that three thousand dollars also. You know, right there cuts light in that three thousand dollars also. So, I mean, you know, I applaud the efforts of the city council crew in this, I applaud Regina's efforts to back out of this. Like I said, if she, for this contract is at-will, and if a supermajority of the council no longer wishes her being here, she'll walk away. Benefits, no extra pay for extended period of time, she walks away. I mean, that's a great agreement by, and it's really respectful by her. Same thing to make it easy, she went back to the calendar year, same prorated. So, right away, you know, having those days, she's, she's not getting ten days this month, or the, it's prorated down to April, so this could be eight days for vacation. Seven and a half, seven and a half, whatever it is.
But who's counting?
And, and same thing, she's open to let us know when she's gonna take days off of vacation. Previously, other people kinda came, gone, we don't know if anybody's had any at all. Days not done, and end up they leave, we're paying for extra vacation time. Same thing, other people leave on agreements, next thing you know, we're still paying health insurance. We're not gonna have to do that with this associate here, hopefully she continues this, she's gonna be very successful, and she's not gonna cripple the city. And that's how I kinda see it. I mean, three thousand dollars, if that's, then we need to do a lot more major cutbacks. And, and like I said, she's local, no matter what happens, she lives here, she's gonna be here, and decisions are made, or happy, unhappy citizens are here, she's gotta hear about it. She comes to local churches, she lives in a local community, she's gonna be at Hardeens and everywhere else. So it's, it's gonna be.
Don't scare her.
Not at all.
I mean, she's put herself, that's information, and I really think, and I really think, the community respects her. They seen her around here, she's been here long enough, and I think, same thing from all of us, we respect her, and that's why, actually at this point, we may agree, make her our city manager. All right?
I have one other thing, I forgot. And, and I agree with the comment in the audience, that we should have asked Regina if she wanted to go in closed session, but I also know that Regina knew that she could go into closed session, and if she'd have wanted to have gone into the closed session, she would have said so.
Well, she said no. When I said something to Nick, she said no.
So. Well, the other thing is too, she has more leverage than we thought. I mean, we're to the point, Charlie, we have to hire a city manager. And she's kinda laid down here, she didn't highball us or negotiate anything else, she's just kinda, just kinda laid here. Even with this contract, how it's written, she's even backed off those demands. So I don't really see any type of problem with that, and I applaud her efforts, and, and hopefully this is gonna be a win-win situation, as the city manager, and the city council, and the city of Bangor. Welcome, Regina. That's all I have, I'd just like to get this media adjourned, so we go watch, watch the game tonight. Do I get a second?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll vote.